All right. Good evening and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and one
Please join in a moment of silence for our fallen servicemen and women. All right, so we're going to begin this evening's meeting with the new feature we started a few months ago. Quick resident comments, no more than a minute each. Limit of 30 minutes and the purpose of this is for residents who are unable to stay for the rest of the meeting. So if you're going to be staying for the meeting, this is not the time, but if you need to run, pick up kids, have dinner, have another meeting to get to, this is an opportunity to come up and share a quick comment with the Board of Trustees. I also would like to announce in the past, we have not been enforcing the four-minute rule that's in our our board rules of procedure on the comment time. And tonight, we're going to start with the four-minute rule and it's really out of respect for the other board members, the staff, people need to work tomorrow. And I think it's a reasonable amount of time. I also want to let people know in the past when we didn't have as many contentious or contentious issue going on, there was more back and forth. Although it is really just a comment period, there were questions and answers and a back and forth discussion. But we're not going to be having that feature during resident comments. You'll make your comment. We appreciate your comments. We'll hear your comments, but there will not be, it's not a question, answer or discussion time. We do have the meet and greets. There'll be another one two weeks from tonight. You're welcome to come to that. That is more of a discussion forum. So I just wanted to let you know that now, so you're not surprised later. That's going to be the procedure for tonight and likely for future meetings for this time being. I also want to encourage, if you have part of the not answering and engaging here at this meeting where there's a small number of people is there are many questions you may have here that others in the village have as well. And we're working to get those, the information out village-wide, not just to people who come to the meeting. So you probably know we have question boxes set up. We have an email set up for questions on St. Paul's. I encourage everyone to submit their questions that way. That allows us to put the answers to those questions out on our website in the FAQ section so that everyone in the village becomes more informed because there are likely others who have those same questions and may not be able to come and ask them. So we'll begin then if there are any quick resident comments, no more than a minute for people who can't stay for the meeting. Yes, you can come up, say your name and address.
My name is Chris Fredo. I'm with 111 7th Street. I'm on the board. Last meeting, the very brief discussion on adding parking spots for our condominium, 111 7th Street. I know that there were more spots given. I think you had sent your advisement to get more spots dedicated just for 111 7th Street, right behind 111 7th Street. And I was sent here by the board to wonder what progress was. It's a very big issue with our key unit residents.
That was the 6:30 meeting. I don't know if it was, that was the 6:30 was the traffic commission meeting and this is Board of Trustees.
Oh, so I could have gone to that meeting? Okay. You thought it went to that meeting, the next one is?
I think it's, is it November?
November, November 16th. Just send us an email because we got started, not going to violate the rules. We got started to look at this. We're looking at space utilization, the one. So if you're talking about spaces closer to your building as opposed to available spaces for permanent, that's a different issue. But right now, we're just looking at space utilization. But we understand the request. We're not ignoring it. We're addressing the police department. And just send us an email and we can always add it to the next agenda if it's not resolved.
Thank you. So which email would I send that to?
Maybe Charles Kelly. Charles Kelly.
Thank you so much.
Any other quick comments? Yes?
All the discussion about St. Paul's is sucking all the oxygen out of every room for other more important issues, especially the issue of the casino sands, the Sands Casino. We haven't heard, haven't heard anything. I mean, look at the letters to the editor in the Garden City News. They're five to one about St. Paul's. And yes, there are some good letters there like Roger McFeely's letter is excellent, but there's so many more letters about, about St. Paul's. We've heard nothing from our legislators, Ed Ra. He said nothing. Kevin Thomas, nothing. The only one of the five members of the community advisory committee that's up for reelection is Don Claven. And, and what is he saying? Well, every, every week I get something from Don Claven about pickleball clinic, destination weddings, sun safety. I'm not saying these aren't important, but nothing, nothing about the Sands Casino. I hope, I just also wanted to mention in closing that I hope, I hope you will take a page from your colleagues from 2009, September 2009. You went down to the Hempstead Town Supervisor Kate Murray at the time. Remember, remember the Lighthouse Project? Remember Charles Wang? He had a $4 billion project and who led the opposition? The mayor of Garden City, Mayor Rothschild. Yes, he had support from other trustees like Nick Episcopia. He was trustee at the time, later mayor. And, and some wonderful residents like Walter McKenna and Christine Mulaney and Larry Quinn. But the trustees at that time led the opposition to 2009 Lighthouse Project, the $4 billion project. I, I hope you will take a page from those trustees and speak to Don Claven. I assume that you meet with him or you meet with his staff at times. And please tell him about the negative impacts of that casino. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is a quick comment you're leaving?
Yes.
Okay.
You can say.
I hope it's a quick comment.
We don't have the timer, which I'm going to have for the four, but just.
Bill Cool, 69 Pine Street, Garden City. I heard a rumor that there was a potential consideration of removing the stained glass windows from St. Paul's. And I just don't know if you're aware that that is an incredibly difficult and delicate operation to do that. And particularly because those windows are so old, it would be subject to all kinds of potential damage, the, the joints cracking and the framework and everything else. So that I just want to go let you know, I mean, you can investigate this, but it takes an incredible amount of talent and experience to successfully remove windows like that. And because there's so many, I could say the odds are that one of the, one or more could be damaged during that process. So just and a real deep concern I have, and I just wanted to go on record for saying that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any quick comments online? Okay. All right. We'll move into comments from department heads. Begin with Mr. Barone.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. I'll be covering 16 items this evening. I'd like to direct your attention to Public Works, item number 19. Is a request to transfer $26,787.50 from Water Administration contingent to transmission and distribution and to ratify work that was performed for two emergency water main breaks. The first main break was completed by Macaron Plumbing on New Hyde Park Road at a cost of $13,377.50. And the second water main break was completed by Orchid Sewer and Water on Tremont and Chestnut at a cost of $13,410. Macaron completed final road restoration and sidewalk restoration on New Hyde Park Road. And Pratt will complete final restoration on Tremont. Item number 20 is a request to engage H2M at a cost of $16,800 to provide assistance to further the identification of materials for the lead service line inventory. The US EPA has mandated all water suppliers identify lead service lines within their water systems by October of 2024, regardless of ownership. The village has started this process, but has a long way to go. H2M will continually update its GIS mapping system using several sources through research. Old building records, meter file cards, road opening permits and plumbing permits will be used to compile the list. The village will also consider a public outreach to residents to participate in identifying their lead service, their service line material. Item number 21 is a request for approval to apply for a New York State DEC Municipal Waste Reduction and Recycling Program grant. This grant has a matching funds requirement and can be used for recycling, education, promotion, planning and coordination projects. Item 22 is a request to approve the maintenance bond in the amount of $340,835 for LSC Construction Corp. This is for the vehicle lift replacement that was completed at the DPW Mechanics Garage. The acceptance of this bond guarantees the work for 18 months. Item number 23 is a request to approve the maintenance bond in the amount of $3,129,062.9 for Allen Industries. This for the water main work that was completed on Meadow Grove, Commander Limburg. The acceptance of this bond guarantees the work for 18 months. Item number 24 is a request to increase the approved budget for the Village Yard Bathroom Project from $190,000, $190,000 to $203,000 to transfer $13,000 from data processing to cover the increase and to increase the PLO for Hema Group from $162,000 to $175,000. Hema is the vendor provided to the village by the charity company to complete the Village Yard Bathroom Project and was hired at a higher amount than what the project was originally awarded for. The charity company has already provided us with the check to cover the cost of this increase. Under a water bids, item 26 is a request to renew the directional drilling contract with Iron Island Directional for an additional year. This work is performed on an as needed basis. Item number 27 is a request to renew the contract to purchase bulk liquid caustic soda from Univar Solutions for an additional year. Caustic soda is used in water treatment to raise low pH levels as required by the Health Department. Items number 28 through 30 is a request to renew three contracts for the second year term to purchase material for streetlight maintenance. Number 28 is to renew with Champion Wire and Cable for item numbers 43 through 46. Number 29 is to renew with Magna Flood for items 32 to 33. And number 30 is to renew with Century Electric for items six and items 10 through 12. They are ordered on an as needed basis. Item number 31 is a request to award the bid for construction of the AOP Treatment at Well 9 for a total cost of $7,786,550. The award of contract G for general work is to J Anthony in the amount of $2,291,000. The award of contract P for plumbing is for RJ Industries in the amount of $3,137,700. And the award of contract E for electrical work is to Hink Electrical in the amount of $2,357,850. This is the last location the village has to upgrade to be in full compliance with the emerging contaminants regulations. Well 9 is still below the new limits, however, it is at the action level required by the Health Department. Item number 32 is a request to award the bid for electrical service to Palace Electrical. Work is to be performed on an as needed basis. The award of this contract will help increase our efficiency for various electrical related service calls for building maintenance. Item 33 in similar fashion is a request to award the bid for HVAC services to Energy Mechanical. Work is to be performed on an as needed basis. The award of this contract will help increase our efficiency for various HVAC related service calls for building maintenance. And item 34 is a request to award the bid for plumbing services to Macaron Plumbing. Work is to be performed on an as needed basis. The award of this contract will also help increase our efficiency for various plumbing related service calls for building maintenance. Those are the items I will cover tonight. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Superintendent, with regard to number 24, perhaps it's just misnamed. But it says Village Yard Bathroom Project and it's moving up to over 200,000 now. I'm sure it's more than a bathroom?
No, it is the bathroom at the DPW Village Yard. The original contractor performing the work folded overnight, so we went to charity company Performance Bond. They provided us with a contractor. They are reimbursing us for the amount of money that it went over the original contract amount. We also had to increase the amount to order temporary facilities while these bathrooms were down. Those, the cost of those are also being reimbursed by charity companies. So that's why the amount is so high.
What's the size of it?
Approximately 10 by 15.
All right, let me say that you have been doing great work on the traffic commission items. Thank you.
Thank you.
John and Mr. Swazi, maybe you can help us with 31. Obviously those are some, some big numbers there and I understand that we're coming to the end of addressing a major problem. If you could just fill the residents in with, with some detail.
I'll take it. Thank you. So as, as Mr. Barone said, Well 9 is the only well in the village that is below the emerging contaminant level for, for dioxide, but because it reached a certain threshold, it is actionable and needs to be treated in anticipation that it'll go over in the near future. This, this project and there's, there's an item that John didn't cover. I'm going to cover item number five, which is to amend the bond from 7.2 to 9, 9.2 million dollars. Although John covered the 7.786550 portion of the project, there are other, there's the cost of the original pilot study, 178, there's $810,000 for design, there's legal and printing for $106,500. And there's contingency of about $318,000. This is where the 92 number comes from. I talked to Joe Todaro, who's been working on this since day one, and I asked him for more details and this, this is not just when the wells were, when all the wells were originally contemplated for AOP, they set about estimating the costs. Those costs have been revised over the years for all the wells because inflation. We made enhancements. We added ortho phosphate. This particular well and every, every site has different characteristics. So this well site is a very congested site up by Edgemere Road. While they were designing it, they noticed that the, the motor controls, the, it's called the Motor Control Center. The electrical components that run the air stripping tower had to be replaced. They need a new generator there. It's because the additional equipment can't be, power can't be generated because it exceeds the capacity of that generator. So that's a million dollar increase right there. There's electrical panels, boost for building, electrical work, new larger caustic soda tank, the ortho phosphate tank, which is going, which is a permanent installation on the previous wells we did temporary, then they go into permanent. So the other wells have had the same pricing done and they've had the same things done to them, but they did them incrementally. This is, this is the only well from day one that's going out to bid with all the components, all wrapped into one. So the price seems high, but it's, it's, you know, it's necessary.
Now, I.
They're options to shut the well down.
I understand. It, it feels like this is going to be a time-consuming endeavor as well. Is this a multi-month project? Is it?
Yes, it'll be, in fact, if this is awarded tonight, it might actually be out of commission part of the next pumping season. And so I don't have the actual timeline in front of me, but I did talk to Stan about this. And H2M, so it's probably going to be six to nine months because they're doing, they're doing three different things, whereas the other ones had dioxide, then they had the ortho phosphate, so.
Understood. And where is Well 9?
Well 9 is off, it's, it's behind Edgemere Park on the western end of Wilson Street, I think. Is it Wilson Street?
And then one final question, Mr. Swazi, I understand that with the tens of millions of dollars we've spent on, on upgrading our wells, a significant part of the expenditure has, or we will be reimbursed.
Yes, the last, Mrs. Wu was on the phone tonight, but I don't know if she has these numbers in front of her, but the last time we reported out it independently and together, there's about, there's about $52 million, give or take a million. I just don't have the exact number in front of me. You know, I like exact numbers, trustee. We were going to get back 50.7% of that. Now with this adjustment here.
I'm sorry, from the state?
From the Environmental Facilities Corporation, which is part of the New York State.
Thank you.
So we're going to get back about 50%. Now, some of these wells went through iterations. So if we originally thought a well was going to have $5 million, then we put a grant in. We get back 2.5. If we later change that grant to $6 million, they don't move the grant up to match it. In this particular case, we've already put a grant in for this well at $7.2 million. So now we're going up to 9.2? Anything above 7.2, we'll only get the, we'll only get the half. We won't get that incremental. So that 50.7% might dip down to 49 something.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
At this point, Rob or all, and John, you can answer, are all the wells up and running except this one will be down when the construction work gets done?
No, 15, 16, which is over, over by Hilton Park. That well is fully constructed. That was about $7.9 million, give or take. That well had compounded issues because there is a, there's high iron concentration in that geographic vicinity of those two wells. 15 and 16 are the only two wells that can't run concurrently. We only run 15 or 16. That's two reasons that number one is they're built very close together. So the, the vortex that created by sucking water out of the ground, they're too close together. So if they ran together, they'd both be running inefficiently. The other reason is there's an iron treatment plant there and oh, can handle one well at a time. So all the, and we were delayed on because of COVID, we had supply chain delays with some of the new valves, electronic valves put in. But Stan's been on top of it. Stan Carey, who's on the phone also, he's been on top of, of the contractor and H2M and, and he said, we gotta, we have almost $800,000 sunk in this thing. We want this well running. So it's, it's on the cusp of getting there, but it's the only well series not running right now.
So 15, 16, and then when nine goes down, that'll be up.
Yeah, 15, 16 is, it's, it's on the cusp of getting there. I don't have a timeline for that. Stan, if you're on the phone, you want to throw in a time parameter, you're closer to it right now, but all the other wells are running. Just so you know, last summer, not the, not the past summer, but the one before, we ran the entire village on three or four wells. That, because that's all we had operating. It's a very dangerous situation to be in because you have no redundancy. You have a mechanical failure. But now we have, right now we have seven of our 10 wells available to us, of which two of them can only run one at a time. So we're basically almost at full capacity.
EBUW head Barone, my wife and I are going to be renovating a bathroom in our house. We're not going to use this company.
But just for clarification, since trustee Kelly asked the question, this bathroom is on top of the, in the DPW garage on the second floor. It's a, it's a complete gut, everything, electrical plumbing, new fixtures, new partitions. We've updated the shower. We reconfigured the way it runs. It's, it's actually, it'll be very good for the, for the men who use this facility. It's taken a lot of time because the contractor went out of business overnight. The good thing about this is that we learned on the lift project, of which there's a maintenance bond tonight, that we won't, we wouldn't let them start the project until all the materials were on site. So the materials got on site and he went out of business. So, but we don't have a delay because of materials there.
And there are no TVs in this bathroom, right?
And we're also redoing the floor. So it's one, it's one of those floors. I forget what's that, polymer floor?
Yes, epoxy.
Epoxy floor. So everything's being updated. Supremates. Not marble now, it's no more.
All right. Thank you for that report. Mr. Givinelli.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Building Department has one item on the agenda tonight. Item A2, Final Site Plan Approval for Tap Room Inc., 919 and 927 Franklin Avenue. Board authorization is requested to approve the application for site plan approval for the Tap Room Inc., which will include a change in the use and interior and alterations. This recommendation for approval was directed by the Planning Board on September 6th, 2023. Collageros is actually rebranding. They're taking over the, the spa next door and they're doing interior renovation. And the Site Planner, Planning Board recommend this BOT Board to approve this site plan. Any questions on that or?
Not on that Superintendent Givinello, but on the Western Firehouse, the Edgemere Firehouse.
I was getting to that trustee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can answer your question on that. We have, we have obtained Slack testing company for, to perform the boring test that the structural engineer is, needs to finalize the structural footings and foundations for the, for the addition for that building. So once they do the testing, we can hand that off to the structural engineer, old structures. They can finalize the design and specifications in order to move that project forward.
And what do you think the timetable is for the testing?
Hopefully we're waiting for that schedule. We're hoping to get there, if not this week, next week, to do those samples.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing I have, Mayor, is, is just a work performance for the Building Department for the month of August. The Building Department has issued 80 building permits, has performed 218 building inspections and has collected a revenue of $73,000 for the month of August. And that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Wasn't happy to answer any questions. What may have?
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Recreation has one item on the agenda this evening. That's item number 16. We are requesting authorization to engage site specialists of Post Avenue Westbury to replace the safety surfacing at Nassau Haven Playground. Estimated cost is $197,752.50. This installation is being purchased through an omnia purchasing contract, which as you've heard from us before, saves us a lot of time and a little money because we don't have to go to bid. This stuff has already been pre-bid. So that is what we have on the agenda this evening. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioner Blake, at the end of that wonderful pool season, the bathrooms, there were some issues with. Do we think we have them resolved now?
We are about to have them resolved. We had Citywide Sewer and Drain in multiple times during the last week of the pool season and they finally came in with a television camera and ran it through the pipes. And as a lot of you may know, most of the land that the pool complex is built on is landfill. And the front area where the parking lot is, it consists of areas of burned and compacted garbage and just raw garbage that was just backed in off the trucks and dumped there and then compacted. And through this unstable land, they ran the sewer pipe and we discovered a break outside of the pool area in the parking lot near the handicap parking spaces. So we've got a proposal and have issued a purchase order to Citywide Sewer to come in and excavate, make the repairs and then camera the rest of the line going out towards Cherry Valley Avenue to make sure there are no other breaks. We are confident that that will solve the problem. Hopefully we won't find any other surprises when the camera starts running through the pipe.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Blake, Commissioner Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no, I do not have anything on the agenda. I just have the, the numbers for August. The Police Department had 1,618 calls for service, 77 case investigations, 27 arrests, one juvenile arrest, 14 in pounds, 107 medical service calls and 59 traffic accident calls. I'd just like to also remind everybody, schools in session, please drive carefully, be wary if there's more children using the roadways, walking to and from school and please adhere to all the school zones. We have extra officers out there on the grant money right now, trying to force and keeping everybody to slow down. Also like to commend a couple of my officers who entered above three and a half, four feet of water. A woman was trapped in a car under one of our underpasses during a really sudden rainstorm. And they were able to pull her to safety. And also yes, two days ago, we had an incident at Hemlock School where Nassau County Police was chasing a person who did a theft at Barnes. who did a theft at Barnes and Noble. And he apparently tried to get into the Hemlock School to hide. But at the same time, there was a school program with children involved. The principal and the off-duty security officer did an excellent job in not letting him get in, called us right away, and Officer Roso and Officer Del Sandro apprehended him on Old Country Road. And then we gave it right over to the county who was looking for him. So that was an excellent job. That was coordination between the school and the police department. Just two weeks prior, I had a training session with their main staff, including the principal, and going over incidents just like this. It just tells you the cooperation we have with school staff. I just want to commend them. And also, the fire department this month helped us immensely. We had, they had, they did a great job at a working house fire. And they also had some rescues for people stuck in elevators. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Jackson, I, I think the coordination that you did with the school was so important in this case. And, you know, I commend you for that. When you're talking about coordination, I was at the Wellington Road House Fire on Sunday. And I thought the coordination between your police department and Chief Perrin's fire department was excellent. And everything was coordinated off and the fire was put out fairly quickly. So again, for you, Chief Perrin and Commissioner Jackson, I commend your work.
Yeah, and also that was, that was originally thought to be an arson, but it turned out to be an electrical issue. But the fire department has a tough task to help us because we need to preserve evidence. And at that time, we thought it was an arson. So they did an excellent job putting the fire out, but at the same time, protecting evidence for the police department so we can solve the case. And that's how, and actually helped them solve the case in this, in this incident. But it's just a tremendous job that they do with us. We work together all the time and, you know, I, I appreciate everything they do for the police department.
Thank you. Commissioner, I want to thank you for all the assistance you've given the traffic commission on the surveys and your responsiveness when we get requests for stop signs and related traffic control devices. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. And Chief Perrin?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The fire department has nothing on the formal agenda or the consent calendar. However, I would ask that the board move to approve our newest firefighter, Ronald Galarza, who's here in attendance tonight.
Or should we do that right now?
If you don't mind.
Okay, will do. Are you going to speak about him?
Sure. So Ronald Galarza, who's here in our attendance tonight, moved to the village two years ago with his family. He's currently a general manager for a contracting firm. He joined the fire department to set an example for his children, as well as give back to the community as welcoming him so openly. So we are requesting that the board approve his application to the department.
Motion, will you approve?
All in favor? To approve. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you for breaking that. Just two quick things. For the month of August, the department responded to a hundred and eight total alarms, hundred and two of which were signal eights, automatic alarms, carbon monoxide spills, things of that nature. Two general alarms, two extracations, and two mutualities to surrounding departments. And on Monday, the department hosted its nine eleven remembrance ceremony. I would like to thank the board, the fellow department heads, especially Paul Blake, the commissioner, for all your assistance that day, as well as the residents of this town, many of the faces I see in the audience tonight, for their attendance. So thank you all. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
That was a very moving ceremony, Chief Perrin. First off, thank you.
Did a great job.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Chief. Counsel?
I have nothing on the formal agenda, except just to note on the number eleven, the Adelphi Agreement is actually a newly drafted agreement. It's basically the original agreement that has been amended as to its term, oh, five or six times. So we redrafted the agreement for a one-year term, and it includes a payment of a fee to the village, plus there are three or four other items that have been included in the agreement, dealing with recruitment of volunteers for the fire department, Adelphi helping the village with that, offering to reduce, or to give a twenty-five percent tuition discount to volunteer firemen. And also, there's a clause about working with the village to support the local restaurants and retailers. Other than that, there are several other agreements on the agenda, which I've looked at and approved as to form. Most of them are renewals of existing agreements. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have Ms. Wu on Zoom?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. All right. Tonight's agenda, under finance, item number one, board authorization is requested to appropriate thirty-six thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifty-one cents from the reserve for compensated absences for an employee who has left village service from the recreation department. Item number two is a transfer of funds that was requested by the water fund to cover additional materials and supplies for the rest of the year. Item number three is a request to close out a capital project that has been completed and to transfer the remaining amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and five cents to the reserve for bond debt, since this project was initially bonded. The project total was about three hundred thousand dollars and only two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars was actually needed. So the, the remaining funds needs to go into the reserve to pay back the debt for this project. Item number four is the American Rescue Plan Act funding that remains in the pool relining project. The board had allocated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to this project from ARPA funds, and only two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars was needed. Therefore, the remaining twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars is to be transferred back to the ARPA funds to be used for future projects. And just so that the board is aware of the total two point three million ARPA funds that were provided to the village, with this transfer, there remains six hundred and sixty-nine thousand in ARPA funds available for future use. Item number five was covered under item number thirty-one. It's the increase in the bond resolution for the well. Item number six is for, excuse me, item number six is professional services to engage capital markets advisors and Hawkins, Delfield, and Wood for the financial presentation on St. Paul's that the village will be doing at the end of the month. These are funds that are available in the finance department for miscellaneous projects, for audit fees or consultants. Capital Markets is the fiscal advisor the village uses every year. And Hawkins, Delfield, and Wood is the bond counsel the village utilizes. Item number seven is, board authorization is, is requested to accept a gift, a donation from the class of, the Garden City High School class of nineteen seventy-seven. I received notification from a couple of members from the class of seventy-seven, Mr. Bill Lucano and Ms. Deidre Orr. They organized a GoFundMe to take down and replace the magnolia tree that's in front of the Garden City Library that was initially donated by the class of nineteen seventy-seven on behalf of their departed classmate, Donna Vavaro. This tree is in, in, according to, you know, discussions with Mr. Blake, needs to be replaced. It is damaged or needs replacement. And so they raised funds to, to help offset the cost of taking down the existing tree and planting a mature tree. And I believe Mr. Lucano or, or Ms. Orr may be in attendance at the board meeting tonight and may wish to speak about this item as well. So that's all the finance items on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Wu.
You're welcome.
Mr. Swazi.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, trustees, good evening, members of the public. Mayor, the first item I want to cover is on the formal agenda, item one, the appointment of Kelly Gallanick from sixty-six Magnolia Avenue in Garden City as the village clerk, effective September twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-three. She'll replacing retiring village clerk Karen Altman, who was also retiring on the same day. Kelly recently joined the Village Garden City. She joins us with a strong background in business and finance, having previously worked in the credit risk group within the investment banking arms of U V S Investment Bank and Barclays Capital. There she analyzed leveraged finance and asset-based lending across multiple industries. Most recently, Kelly worked in local residential real estate with Hannah Howard, coach realtors here in Garden City. She's resided in the village for more than twelve years. She has an undergraduate degree in business administration with an emphasis on finance from Boston University, as well as an MBA in financial management. Kelly, I want to welcome you aboard and wish you the best of luck in your career for the village. Those one door opens and another one closes. I want to say a few words about Karen Altman, who's retiring. This is her last public meeting, that she will be officially the village clerk. Karen, I want personally to thank you for the time we've worked together these last eight years, plus years. You welcomed me with open arms and helped me assimilate quickly to the ways of Garden City. Your work ethic, professionalism, attention to detail have served this community so well. Therefore, on behalf of myself, our colleagues, our residents and businesses, plus the many former trustees and mayors you have served, I thank you for your job well done. Kelly, twenty-five, thirty years now, you know what to expect. Okay, let's see, item number, item number five, we already covered in regards to the amending the bond resolution. Item number nine is a transition, transition consultant agreement for Karen Altman, which will take place on September twenty-sixth. She'll be here as needed from now till May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. From that day, at a hundred dollars per hour. There's an agreement, Gary touched on multiple agreements. A new one here is for Long Island Railroad license agreement. Board authorization is requested to enter into an agreement with the Long Island Railroad for the installation of one twelve-inch diameter steel casing under the tracks on Clinton Road near the intersection of St. James Street South and Commercial Avenue in Garden City. The village will pay a one-time fee of forty-five hundred dollars and annual fee of one hundred dollars. This required, the Long Island Railroad requires the village to execute this access agreement to install a water main under railroad tracks on Clinton Road. Mr. Fishberg has reviewed it and village insurance carrier as well. This project is expected to begin within the next month. So it's going to be night work. This is attached to the new water main going from Clinton to the back in the Rosewell Field, including in front of five fifty-five Stewart Avenue. They'll be paying about two hundred fifty-one thousand dollars for their portion of the main in front of their property. And there's another water main that goes up to Commercial Avenue. It's a four-inch main, restricts the flow of water for fire safety reasons. And that's the maintenance going under the tracks. The Adelphi Agreement, Mr. Fishberg had covered already, item number eleven. Item number twelve, this is renewal of professional service agreement with, for the village telephone services. We use Land Rover network services for those people who weren't here and don't know this. We, we switched over to a voice over IP phone system about five or six years ago. Those are appliances on a network. Our computers actually plug into the phones for access to network. This, this vendor, Land Rover, is one of the best maintenance contracts I've ever worked with, and we'd like to renew him. Seventeen and eighteen are both related to phones for the library. I'll ask Executive Director Mayor Malagon to speak to those directly. Number twenty-five, the village toll house. As the boards are aware, the village took possession of the toll house sometime last August or September. I'm not sure the exact date of the transaction. Anyway, we're trying to, there's, there's three utilities, gas, electric, and water. The water bill was outstanding. So tonight, we want to ask the board to transfer fourteen hundred dollars to the parks department. Mr. Blake has offered to secure these expenses on his revenue, but we want to take money out of contingent to fund that, so it doesn't hurt his utility expenses. And we also want to write off the outstanding water bills from the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of two thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. This includes penalties as well, so it's inflated by our own processes. I just want to point out that I transferred the gas over to the village in December, just before the coal spill last year. Electric was transferred later, late August, and now water. We will be coming back in October agenda to ask for additional transfers for Mr. Blake to cover the gas and electric utilities as well. It'll be about a hundred dollars a month. So we need to cover fifteen months of electric, and I don't have the gas numbers, but we'll have those in the next agenda. And let me see, I think everything else is covered by Mr. Barone. I'm, I'm done. Oh, I have it. I do have additional information. I'm sorry. Earlier this week, I received emails from the Donatory Authority, state of New York, they're known as DASNY, notifying me that the grant reimbursement applications I submitted for the two grants for the library, children's reading room rehab project have been approved. The hundred fifty thousand grant was initiated by Senator Thomas and the fifty thousand dollar grant from the, from Assemblyman Raw. Both reimbursements were ordered and approved, and the village will receive two wire transfers on Friday, nine fifteen, totaling two hundred thousand dollars. More good news, the village received a check in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents from Three T C, which represents an agreed-upon amount for depreciation, depreciation for degradation of the roads in the vicinity of the third track project, based upon a review by Mr. Barone in the engineering department. These funds will be used, these funds will be used for any road work in the vicinity of the third track project. That's all I have, Mayor. You did ask me to talk about another topic at your.
Actually, one thing, just to clarify, the, the license agreement for the railroad, I didn't know, I didn't hear, it's a one thousand, one hundred annual fee, right? Not one hundred?
Right, one thousand, one hundred.
Yeah, okay. So the other that was raised before, the stained glass windows, an issue that for years, I know the village has been working on. It's been recommended that they be removed and safely stored. And most recently, by the latest consultant, recommended that for safekeeping. And do you want to just update on, we do recognize the importance of it and the care that needs to be taken if you want to update on the progress?
Yeah, so when this started many years ago, before the stabilization project got underway, I was looking for the stained glass in particular because there's a specialty area, as the gentleman noted who spoke earlier. At the time, I don't remember all the details. At the time, I was directed to Feminella and Associates. Mr. Arthur Feminella, I spoke to him directly. I spoke to the person he sent out here to look at the windows. At that time, they had given us a price for removing the nine windows in the seventy thousand dollar range, give or take, as I recall. We had not at that point resolved some of the other issues such as abatement, possible abatement, or where the crates would be stored. When this started up again, Mayor, you, trustee Marcia Adam, myself, and Ms. Rosenblatt, when we were interviewing village clerks, we talked about this again. And I reached out to multiple stained glass vendors, not, not the vendors that do residential stained glass, but, you know, hardcore commercial, St. Patrick Cathedral, Notre Dame type people. I've talked to people from Wisconsin. I talked to a guy from Chicago just yesterday. I've talked to Mr. Feminella Junior. His father had passed away. I've checked with Mr. Walter Beal from C N Y, who is overseeing the stabilization for the village, who's in the construction industry. He highly recommends Feminella. Mr. Westerman also said he's an excellent choice. I've spoken, Mr. Feminella, I talked to him this morning. He said, Ralph, you've called me more in the last two weeks than some one million dollar clients. So, but I've been, I've been drilling down on what the packing materials are, size of the crates, the weight, the things we need for storage. Mr. Beal, I reached out to the cathedral, to Dean Sniffen. I reached out to Mr. Feminella, and I reached out to Walter Beal about storage facilities. The storage facilities do not have to be museum level quality. They have to be, of course, secure, insured, but they need to have a temperature of sixty-five to seventy-five degrees, average to low humidity. And, and it's the crating itself, you know, so he's going to. You know, so he's going to, he's going to give me all the dimensions. I sent him an email on that. He said he didn't have time to fill me in on it, but basically copious ventilation in the crates themselves, no poly materials used, but he's going to give me all that stuff. Another component, so Mr. Beal also gave me a contact for storage facilities, so the weight and stuff is needed to find those facilities. So I'm working on the location where these boxes will go. I'm working, I already have an excellent, I believe, doable proposal for Mr. Feminella for a hundred four thousand dollars to take here the nine vertical windows in the cathedral. There is another piece of stained glass, a beautiful piece of stained glass. If the village doesn't want it, I'll take it home with me. It's a ten-by-fourteen skylight. I asked Mr. Feminella if he could give me a price without seeing it. He said he needs to see, he needs to know exactly where it is, what's underneath it. He needs to know the space between the skylight and the skylight above that protects from weather and what he calls a low light or lay light, where the actual stained glass is, and what that space is. I think he called it interstitial space. Anyway, I'm learning a lot more about stained glass than I thought I'd ever know. Nonetheless, he has insurance qualities. By the way, when we did bid this out once, and we gave it to the lowest bidder, he couldn't meet the insurance requirements, and that's just about when the administration came in two and a half years ago, so everything went on pause. So I'm glad to be re-engaged with them. I think this is the right team. I'm gathering all the information I need so that we know where the crates are going to be stored, how the crates can be packed, what materials, the weight, the size. And he will, I also reached out to MIR, who did the original appraisal. They're out of Chicago. He told me that Ms. Feminella told me, he goes, Ralph, you can spend money on a guy from Chicago appraising this, but I can appraise it as well when I'm on site, so, and I don't think he's going to charge us for that. But don't quote me on that. But anyway, we can do the independent appraisal or have him praise. He does. That's part of his work, too. The other people I reached out to, I reached out to a guy in Wisconsin or Michigan. I was somewhere up there. He was willing to come out here for nothing. Look, then he called me and said he didn't want the job. Another person that was part of that cadre of people we found on the internet didn't respond. And Mrs. Feminella was my fourth one. So I'm happy with where we are. I hope the board will support this when it gets back on the agenda with this other information flushed out.
Thank you. I think the other delay was the location they'll be stored and ruling out that any additional abatement needs to be done.
Yes, the abatement question, I'm sorry. So when I read his proposal thoroughly, and I guess five years ago, I didn't didn't get to read that one thing. There's an exclude, there are exclusions in here. One of the exclusions is that the windows are abated. We don't think there's going to be asbestos in there, but he has to know for sure. He can't deal with a hot product. So Engineering Department, Mr. Barone, has reached out to four vendors. Only one responded. We have an eighty-five hundred dollar quote to test all nine windows because they're not all the same vintage. So we don't know, and we don't know if somebody repaired the caulking with a modern product in the last four or five decades. So Mr. Feminella explained exactly how the test has to be done. I passed it on to Engineering, which was put into the RFP for these companies. So when those results are known, if there's no abatement to be done or limited abatement, then we'll, if there's no abatement, we'll go right to a removal with the board, support of the board. If there is abatement, we have to know how much and put out a bid on that. And Mr. Feminella was aware that he was taken off the agenda tonight and that, and that all these things have to happen, but he's happy with that. He's very excited about this. He also offered at any time if he wants to have him on Zoom to talk to the board and to the residents. He'd be happy to do that as well.
Thank you for all the work, and I do want to just assure residents, we realize the importance of doing this, the care that needs to be taken. And we are moving on it. I also want to assure residents that this decision is like the universal recommendation, regardless of what the decision is on the St. Paul's building, this is what's recommended, that the windows be safeguarded and taken out. So I want to make sure that people realize it has nothing to do. These efforts that began years ago are unrelated to the opinion poll that's upcoming. So it's not any indication of what direction the board will be going.
Mr. Swazi.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your efforts. The question is, how much will it cost to put them back?
That's a good question.
I tend to ask questions for a while.
I don't want to, I don't want to cross that bridge when I come to it. I don't know the answer to that.
No, I just.
I figure it's going to take just as much labor to uncrack them and put them back. So I would think, and it might be a little bit more because the surfaces around it, depending on what's, it depends where it goes. Is it going back in the cathedral? Is it?
I remember the thing about Humpty Dumpty and putting them back together again. And glasses, stained windows kind of comes to mind.
So I just want to, I've had conversations with everyone. It was a silly statement. I've had conversations with everyone I talked to, I was about to say. I asked about cleaning because the guy from Chicago said you should use a mild cleaning. The guy from Wisconsin said, don't clean them at all, just pack them correctly. Feminella said they have to be packed correctly. You clean them when you take them out and put them back. So, you know, there's, it depends on where you are in the industry, but.
Obviously, the questions that are key to be answered to this whole process is, assuming the hundred and four, whatever dollars it is, how soon thereafter is there an expectation that the windows will in fact be removed? What would be the cost to shore up whatever space it is that the windows are occupying? What would be the cost of then storing them for however long? Because candidly, the storage of those windows will probably be at least a number of years through the process of the secret. And then you have the cost. So the answer is.
Well, so as far as the, when the windows come down, once we determine the abatement status, Mr. Feminella team will come in here. They will remove the windows. And they'll be using a lift on the outside. They have access from the inside. They will bring it to the ground. They will securely pack them for permanent storage for five to ten years. And then they will transport them within like a fifty-mile radius. And he said, don't worry about fifty miles. I'll go see, I'll go see, I'm not going to New Mexico with them. So, so we'll get them delivered. As far as the windows, once they come out, they'll be boarded up. That's part of the contract, part of a hundred four. He has a subcontractor. They'll take care of that. It includes the rental of the lift. So we just established the the hazardous materials for him, and then the rest he takes care of. The storage, I won't know the answer to because I haven't found the facility yet. That's one of the pieces of information the mayor asked me to secure before bringing this back to the agenda so that questions like this are no longer unanswered but answered.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor, I did have a question on number eleven, the renewal of the agreement with Adelphi. Just a quick question to Chief Pern. Chief, are you aware of any your team that has ever taken advantage of that twenty-five percent discount in the tuition?
No, we have not. No one has taken in the past. I will say this, we have had Adelphi students in the past join our ranks as, when they were students, and it has worked out very well.
The reason I ask is because it is part of the agreement that we're going to enter into with the university, and it's just been a little bit of a craw in my side because I think the the benefits are one-sided and have been one-sided for a number of years, and I don't know whether we can ever level out the field. I mean, benefited toward Adelphi in light of the services that the PD and the FD provide. I also note that there are two payments that will be made, Mr. Swazi, twelve-five and twelve-five. I would just ask that we keep an eye on this because I know certainly during COVID, we didn't receive payments for a couple of years, and I might be wrong, or they might have been brought up to to level, but I would love, and I know, I think
Yeah, I wanted to.
Chester was involved here, too.
Trustee Finner, and I just, about four months ago, if my timetable is correct, Trustee Torino, Mayor Flanagan, and myself, and Village Administrator Swazi, as well as Treasurer Irene Wu, met with some of the officials at Adelphi, not the president, she couldn't make it, but a number of them, and a lot of issues were discussed. And we do plan to have another meeting. I think they were going to reach out to us. Yeah, I'm not particularly enthused with the agreement, but it is a step forward, and there's a lot more to do. Next week, Chief Pern and some of his assistants, as well as Village Administrator Swazi, will be meeting with them in terms of talking about recruiting and what they can do. Because it does seem more fire trucks make a visit every time. In fact, after leaving the ceremony on Monday, apparently a truck was heading over to Adelphi yet again. But one truck because probably knowing what happened, hairdryer set off the fire alarm or something. So we're well aware that it is frustrating, but we continue to have another meeting and go forward.
Excellent. Thank you, trustee.
I share. I think we all share the same. This is a step. And only that.
Number eleven should be called new agreement, not renew agreement, based on what council said. So we should probably change the word renew just to new, N-E-W.
Thank you. I agree.
Are you taking trustee comments in general now?
I'm going to make a comment before we finish with the reports from. Okay. Yes, do you want to comment on the library phone?
Sure.
Sure, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. First, I ask your forgiveness, trustee Colehan asked me to steal a minute to offer my tremendous appreciation on behalf of he and the other library trustees, trustee Greco, Norian, Mr. Trustee McGuire, and trustee Foley, for all of the tremendous help and support that we've been getting over at the library. Trustee Torino has been very hands-on as our liaison. We are currently in the middle of five major projects. The children's room is making its final lap. We have the fire alarm. The roof and masonry project is underway. Our HVAC system is in progress, and the tremendous landscaping effort that occurred over the past two weekends with the Recreation and Parks Department. I, there are so many other projects. I was talking to Mr. Swazi about it before. He was calling it a renaissance to me the other day on the phone because of how much change and improvement has been going on at the library, and people are noticing, and we all really appreciate it. My special thanks to Paul, Ralph, John, Giuseppe, the commissioner and the chief, because I worked with them on fire and other safety projects as well. And I really know that there are all other staff involved and other departments as well in these efforts. As Paul likes to say, I'm going to steal your line, we work with really great people. So thanks for all your support and cooperation on all these efforts at the library. We notice and we appreciate it. On that note, speaking of cooperative projects, Ralph helped us get our voice-over IP phone system off the ground about three years ago based on their satisfaction with the Mytel phone system. Our system's a little different. We're fully cloud-based, and so about three, a couple of years ago, Mytel entered into a strategic partnership for all of its UCAS systems, which is United Communications as a Service, Unified Communications as a Service, to move to Ring Central, which is a leader in that sector. So the library is requesting authorization to renew its contract, only we're going to move to Ring Central for a first-year cost of five thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-six cents and a subsequent two- and three-year cost of nine thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and sixteen cents for a thirty-six-month contract. This is a savings of approximately twenty-one percent annually. And this has been reviewed by council, and we worked extensively with Land Rover, which is the same partner that helped us to our first implementation. And that's what the following item is about, and that request is to approve two thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-five cents for the library to have its implementation of the new Ring Central contract. Any questions? Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you for everything you're doing there. Everything's looking great.
Thank you. My pleasure.
All right, so I just wanted to share a few words with five weeks on St. Paul's, with five weeks remaining before the Saturday, October twenty-first Public Opinion Poll. I hope residents have had a chance to visit the St. Paul's page on the village website. It includes a wealth of information about the upcoming poll, as well as answers to many questions residents have. I understand that nearly all residents are ready for a decision to be made on the St. Paul's main building, though they may differ on what they want that decision to be. As your mayor, I am committed to providing residents with the truth about the condition of the building, what we know about the cost of different options, and how the village could finance any project, whether it be a preservation project or demolition. I hope all residents participate in this important opportunity to voice their opinions on the future of the St. Paul's main building. You will not hear me advocating for any particular outcome because I feel strongly that I need to understand the wishes of residents on this topic that has divided our village for so many years in order to lead us to a decision effectively. The Board of Trustees is committed to listening to residents as we move towards a decision, and we are committed to presenting facts with complete candor. We have heard your questions about how a St. Paul's project could be financed. We understand that you want to know the impact any St. Paul's project would have on the financial health of the village and on your tax bill. Residents are invited to attend an information session in person at the Senior Center or by Zoom on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth at seven PM. The program will include an overview of the village financial position by our Treasurer Irene Wu, details on the municipal bond issuance process by Bond Council, and financing options and impact on taxes by our financial advisors. The program will be taped and shared on the village webpage for any residents who are unable to attend in person or by Zoom. There is a flyer about the presentation outside you may have seen when you came in. All residents with finance-related questions are encouraged to submit them to stpalsquestions@gardencityny.net so we can make sure the content is comprehensive. Residents have been sharing their questions about the St. Paul's Public Opinion Poll. And as the content on our FAQ page is expanding, we will be organizing the information into categories to make it easier to find the questions you may have. We'll have a section with questions about the details of the upcoming community poll, a section on questions about how any project could be financed and impact on taxes, while a section on environmental impact on a demolition or preservation project, and a section on questions about the structure of the building and what the preliminary cost estimate numbers are that we have. As we get more questions, these categories may change because we are looking to answer questions that all residents have on this very complex topic. The importance of gauging community support cannot be underestimated, and that is why we need to hear from all residents on October twenty-first. And I would also like to announce, in addition to the financing info session, as you probably know, we're getting clarification from Westerman Construction on their, the details on their cost estimates. We will be having another session the following Tuesday, October third. This one will be at six-thirty rather than seven. It'll also be at the Senior Center. There'll be a Zoom link for this as well, and we intend to record it and share it on the website as well. And in that session, we will be addressing the other issues, the condition of the building, the cost estimates, timeline for any potential projects, permitted uses, and an explanation as to what they are and what that means, and environmental impact overview. And at that time, we'll be joined by, you know, Lloyd Westerman, Stephen Taylor, and we'll also have counsel there on the environmental issues and the permitted uses. So that's my update. Is there any other trustee comments?
Oh, yeah, I see comments. They're not St. Paul's, but they're still permitted, I think. Number one, most of you did not attend the Traffic Commission meeting, and it was announced that protocols are now on the village website under the Traffic Commission tab, protocols for requesting either traffic control devices such as stop signs, parking signs, markings on the street, and also and also protocols for traffic calming devices, which would include speed humps, which now exist in a permanent way on Fourth Street and will be placed in a temporary fashion, the temporary speed humps on Third Street. That's my comment on traffic. My second comment is on the Sands Casino. There was a comment made that we should be paying attention to this. I can assure residents that we are. We've had numerous meetings. We've had a lot of discussions in terms of private sessions. I think we'll be having an executive session soon to discuss matters with regard to this. My final comment is to welcome Kelly as the new clerk and to thank Karen for all her work. I know that not just with regard to election matters, but with regard to the Traffic Commission and the preparation of notice of consideration letters and other matters. She has worked closely with me and my wife Margaret in terms of getting those ready and getting them out. And those are just two examples, Karen, of the kind of things that you've always helped so much with and in such a kind and gracious way. So thank you very much. Continuing the discussion on Say No to the Casino. I appreciate Mr. Leo Stimler bringing up the fact that that's kind of been pushed aside for a little bit. Mayor Flanagan and myself appeared twice before the Nassau County Legislature urging them not to give the go-ahead to the transfer of the lease to Sands. Unfortunately, they went ahead and did that. So we have been actively involved. We continue to be involved. I know that Monica Kiley, as well as Rich Catalano, have been very involved in giving us information and trying to get out to the residents the importance of opposing this casino. I am somewhat disappointed that we haven't heard anything from the school district, whether from the superintendent or a board of education. I would think that they would be making some comments opposing this as well as some of the other organizations in town, some of the sports organizations, Parents United, the various organizations, and even to the extent that POAs. Rich Catalano has certainly taken the lead, but we need a stronger push from them as well. There's nothing good that comes from a casino or very little good and the bad greatly outweighs it. So again, I would like all of you in the audience here, whatever reason that you're here, to try to voice that, that the casino will not be good for Garden City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up, I've got two quick comments. Number one is on the casino and I, before I was elected, appeared before the legislature three times.
You did add, I apologize.
No, that's okay. I'm not trying to trump my good friend Bruce, but, but there were many of our residents who did take an active role there and we're in a little bit of a lull. We have some information recently that has been sent to us about the SEACRA process that is beginning and that is going to be run by the town of Hempstead. They also have to do some zoning. Then, of course, we have the committee, the community-wide committee, and then, of course, we have Hockels Committee. So this is definitely a 2024 event. I don't know when. So we haven't dropped the ball. We don't intend to drop the ball and we have had a lot of support in the community to date.
We have, but we need more.
We do, we do.
And that's why I mentioned what I did. And what I'd also like to mention is that Supervisor Don Clavon, State Senator Kevin Thomas, as well as the seven women, Ed Raw, need to hear from people. They need to get calls. They need to be told to oppose this casino as best that you can. Thank you.
And then finally, my second comment has to do with Seventh Street and Franklin. Speaking to the mayor, she asked me to coordinate an effort to address some of the more obvious conditions on Seventh Street and Franklin. And I have heard from a number of my friends via text and otherwise how unhappy they are with the condition. So what I've done, and it'll be with the help of trustee Harrington as well, is I've reached out to Paul Blake, to Giovanni Giuseppe, excuse me, to John Barone. We're also going to be speaking with John Wilton of the Chamber, the CAC Beautification Committee. You know, we're, we're trying to change human behavior a little bit because I think we'd all agree that that's changed over the last 10, 20, 30 years. Folks are a little bit more cavalier with their refuse. Paul is going to be doing a bang-up job and has on the flower beds and whatnot. And then John Barone and Giuseppe are going to help with enforcement because there are code regulations that require vendors to clean up in front of and in back of their facilities and their buildings. This is common sense kindergarten stuff, but obviously it's going to take a little time. We need everybody's help. So bear with us, but know that we have heard loud and clear the complaints about the condition of Seventh Street and Franklin. They will be addressed, but, you know, in this, in this post-COVID era, I don't know if anybody wants to pick up, you know, a piece of paper or a cup on the sidewalk anymore. But it all starts with us. So bear with us, know that we care and, and we might be asking you to join us. So thank you.
I would just like to echo Mayor Flanagan and encouraging folks to attend the two presentations on St. Paul's and the 26th and the 3rd. I'm, we'll have the experts there that can address your questions. I would, I would also encourage folks to submit questions to the website because I think for the Westerman presentation, we'll be taking questions in advance. I think that's the, that's the intent right now. But please attend and it's a great opportunity to get all your questions answered to the extent they can.
Thank you and thank you for all the work you have done on this mic with the finance committee on putting this together. I think it'll answer a lot of questions.
Kelly, welcome aboard. You have some very large shoes to fill. Candidly, one of the skills that you may need to pick up from Karen is how you gently inform us trustees of how ignorant we are and what we need to do. That is a great skill which I learned that Karen had in abundance when I first became a trustee in 1997. My grandmother said that if ignorance is bliss, that explains why you have a happy fellow. And when I walked around happily, Karen was kind enough to explain to me that village government works differently. You can't wave a magic wand. It's like herding cats and you can't understand why you have to do the same thing 12 times for eight people. But you volunteered for this. I mean, my father was an army colonel. He said, never volunteer for anything. And we are glad to have you with us and take as much information from Karen as you can. I see that you brought your pad. That is one of a lot of pads you're going to need. Thank you. I think us as a board, Karen, all appreciate what you've done. I know in my two and a half years so far on the board, you've been extremely helpful, always there when I've had a question. So I think we all agree that you have been such an asset to this village. You will definitely be missed. I know you're going to be around for a while, thankfully, but you would definitely be missed. And Kelly, welcome again, like you've heard, and good luck.
It's going to be great, buddy.
All right.
I'm sorry, I had my microphone off. We're going to begin the comments now with the four-minute clock should be displayed.
Good evening. Steve Alardi, 139 Meadow. On, on item 10, the license agreement with the railroad, is there any existing fees we're paying them? I assume there's a water main that's running under there currently, you mentioned?
Yes, there's a water main now, Mr. Alardi. I don't have the exact history in front of me. We did, we did, Stan did ask H2M. This is not unique to the village. We believe that a lot of the water mains existed, predated the railroad, so they kind of grandfathered them, but when changes occur, especially for viability purposes, they won an agreement in place. So and we're also, when this work gets done, it's according to the long railway standards. So we're working with them on exactly how the main is inserted and applied.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Any other citizen comments on agenda items? Or anyone on, oh, yeah.
I'm Kathy Brennan, Borsaki. I live on Locust Street and I have a question about the ballot. Let's see. When, when Westerman gave us the three options, it was for demolition, facadeism and adaptive reuse. Adaptive reuse was not, had no facadeism in it and it had the same footprint as building currently has. We talked to a lot of people. Many people said they liked adaptive reuse for a community center that would meet the needs of people of all ages. The FDM Committee wanted demolition and a handful of residents wanted facadeism, which was the most expensive. And just so everyone knows what it is, in the dictionary, facadeism says it's the practice of saving the fronts of old buildings and demolishing the backs. So what we had, we had three distinct RFPs and in the ballot, it's very confusing. Like when we had from, from Westerman, we had the cost for demolition, the cost for adaptive reuse and the cost for facadeism. But when, when I read the ballot, I was very confused because it says, first of all, it says on the top, it has the preservation on the top, choose one, preservation or demolition. And in the preservation, it talks about preserving the whole building. We never said that. We always said we were going to do a partial renovation. So that's, that needs to be changed. The cost estimator said that 15% of the building would be used. It's not, that's not true. It's 25% of the building that would be used. The next one says the cost estimator hired by the village provided a cost estimate to preserve the front. Once again, that's facadeism. That's not any part of the restoration program. And the last one says that after, after the preservation, after the vote, that we'll look into the affordability of adaptive use. We already have from Westerman. We already have adaptive use was going to cost $49 million. So we already know that and we already know what demolition and facadeism are going to cost. So, and then in the bottom of this fourth paragraph, it says that this is under preservation or what we call restoration, adaptive reuse, partial restoration. It says consideration will be given to the possibility of replacing the fieldhouse and Cluett Hall. Once again, that's not part of anything we ever discussed in adaptive use. And then for demolition, it says demolish the entire building. That's, that's been understood. And then it would include the backfill, one of them for a simple park. This was what Westerman had for demolish it and have a simple park, just plant grass and that, and salvage historic valuable artifacts. Yes, that would, that was like 17 million. But the last option is also confusing under demolition because it says, if this option, meaning demolition, is chosen, the village will immediately evaluate the land, the use of the land as a park. We already know what that is. That's demolition at a park is 17 million here. And then you had also talked about making, someone had spoken about make a landscaped park and that would be an additional 12 to 15 million dollars for the landscape park. But it also says, you would say you would immediately, after the, after the vote for demolition, you would immediately evaluate the use of the park or for a recreation or community center to replace the fieldhouse and Cluett Hall. So that must mean that the fieldhouse and Cluett Hall are going to be demolished. So there's no cost for demolishing those two and there's no cost or description of a recreation or community center. So I think it's confusing to the voters who are going to come out and look at this and there are no cost lists. So what I did, I, I went and I, I looked at your format and I made a similar type of format and because I've been working on the St. Paul's and the St. Paul's Alliance Committee for a while. So I, I mean, I have more knowledge about what we're doing. And if you want anybody to give you help about what, how to describe it, you can just say, anyone would help ask you. Am I over? Okay. Well, then my last thing is just like in here, when you were running, you said what you wanted to resolve St. Paul and I just want to make sure that this is still true. We commit to bringing forward an informed resident vote, respected by our residents and to which the board will adhere. So I'm hoping that the board will do that because that was in, what you promised the people when they voted for you. So I'm sure, I hope that continues. Right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have one. Bill Lucano, Houston Road. This is on agenda item number seven. I'm requesting authorization by the board to accept our gift donation from the class of 1977 of just a little under $3,000. It came to $2,957.36 to replace the beautiful magnolia tree that was out in front of the library. And since the work has been done and Commissioner Blake's been ripping out all the greenery there, you see it. It's like the only thing in front of the library. Library is gorgeous. We want that tree replaced. It looks like it could be done in about a month. Soon as the weather cools, we weren't ready for this hot weather and this is not like an Indian summer. So but we're, we're hopeful that this will get done and thank you again for helping on this. Trustee Chester and Commissioner Blake were fantastic. And I mean, when I emailed Commissioner Blake, he probably sent me an email back inside of an hour and had his guy Mike go down there and told us that the tree was diseased and we weren't happy to hear that. But we started a GoFundMe page and raised about $3,000 in a couple of weeks and we'd love to give it to the village to beautify the grounds of the library. So I hope it's authorized.
Thank you.
Let's go.
Any other comments on agenda items?
I just have some questions about the opinion poll as well. So for the opinion poll, I think it's, oh, agenda. Oh, so this is after. Oh, I'm sorry. Jessica Ty79, Brixton Road. Sorry. Okay. So does that count as my minutes?
Restart.
Okay. So I actually think the, the poll is really very wordy and very, very redundant. I think it should be very concise. I mean, we voted on different things. Usually it's one, two, three, three sentences, not like a whole page. Because when you're doing all the details, you're including some details, you're excluding some details and people cannot rebuttal and it's not fair for people. So for example, the 15% for public use, is that attic? Like where did that percentage number come from? And also when you say that, is the rest of the building still crumbling? That's not clear. And when the whole building, if, I think what we, the fact is the whole building will be repaired with first and second floors ready for immediate public use. If you put it that way, that's 32,000 square feet and that's a lot of footage. And the rest of the building, ceilings, floors, joints will all be repaired with fire alarms, new electrical and temperature will be controlled and that will be secured and ready for future use. So when we have the apartments all ready and then we're going to have more needs for more space. So when you say 15% of the building and people are just thinking it could be the basement, it could be the attic, who knows what it is? Who knows what the rest of the building will look like? But if you say the same thing, if you word it differently, But if you say the same thing, if you word it differently, we're going to have first, second floor ready for immediate reuse, reuse, and the rest of the building will be ready for future reuse. I mean, that just makes a huge difference. So I think you should be very concise, just say, okay, we're doing just two options, demo or preserve, and that's it. And then you could throw in the numbers, but don't do, okay, maybe we're gonna do the park, maybe this is 50%, 15%. It's very confusing, and just keep it short and sweet and concise. Otherwise, it's just that when you are throwing some details, but not all the details, it's just not fair. So that's the simple part, and I do have a question about, um, the fair, um, the Seventh Street, um, prominence that were canceled. So I also saw like there was a Facebook, um, on social media, there was a post about the Big Apple Circus coming back. Is that an automatic message, or it's, are we, is?
That was a mistake, and I, and I don't think John Wilton's here, that's been taken down, we don't know how that went up, but no, there's no.
Okay, so I think people were thinking maybe it's back. But I did mention, uh, an alternative, uh, way of having a fair for residents only. I think many people in the village actually liked the idea, so I did start a petition online, and I have, uh, many signatures. So it's all here, so I could give this to you. Basically, what I recommend is that, um, so we could have an alternative fair, maybe in the fall, hopefully, because we have the musicians already, we have the bands ready, we have all these, you know, like the, the, uh, the vendors and different things in the village ready from the prominence, and we canceled them. Maybe it can come back, maybe we can just change the location to a village park instead. We do, my friend Collect actually mentioned their, um, community park would be a very good place. We have huge fields there that can handle crowds, we have a huge parking lot, and it's, uh, it's kind of gated, so we can control who comes in, and for tickets, we could even just, you know, like, um, the uh, Department of Parks and Recreations could give tickets based on residency, or the library could give out tickets based on, um, the credit, the, the library cards, so I think that's a good idea. So, um, I just wanna give this to you, it has all the signatures.
All right, thank you.
Robert, sorry, Robert Vesselotti, 32 Brixton. Um, I'm a member of the St. Paul's Alliance, and we've been working very hard on trying to make a great community center one day over there. And we think it's best for every resident to have a community center. So we need to know what we're voting on, I agree with the ladies here, their comments were spot on, the ballot is totally kind of confusing and needs to be reworked, and I think we all know that at this point. Especially as relating to the percentage of space, it's way off. So I'm not gonna repeat what they said, but they said it right, and they had the facts. The other thing is on item number, number 35, it's a terrible day to have this vote, let's face it. A lot of people were not listened to when, when they were commenting about moving this date. We're pretty much wiping out the idea of having a young, excited voter coming out to vote, they're gonna be involved with homecoming and football games and everything else. So it's a terrible day for, you know, casting your ballot. So I know there was a lot of protests about that at the last meeting, and it kind of fell on deaf ears. So it's on the agenda, I understand that, the balloting is on the agenda, I understand that, but there's a lot of things that need to be corrected. So those are my comments in relation to agenda items for tonight, thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know, actually, before we hear the next comment, if you, the 15%, I know there's been a lot of talk about that. I don't know if you want to just explain where we got the 15%? As everyone knows, first of all, we're waiting for clarification, the report by all accounts was not clear on the finished space, so.
You have an answer for that? So.
We're still waiting for clarification.
So maybe it's premature, we had, okay, we, I, we just went up. It was put on there based on the information we had, and an estimate as to the rooms that would be available for community use that appeared to be part of adaptive reuse.
So Mr. Givernell, I spoke to Mr. Westman, was it Friday last?
Friday.
We spoke to him, um, after business hours on Friday last week, and we specifically asked him to include, the whole idea of clarifying the report is to make these things that you're bringing up clear, so there's no question about them. And it's coming from him, not from anyone in the village. We asked him specifically to include a percentage of usable space in all footprints of the building, whether it be facadeism or the adaptive reuse, and we also asked him to give an equivalent square footage number that, that percentage was derived of, so we asked him to put it in plain English to just tell what it is, so there's no, so the ballot, if the ballot's gonna have a percentage on it, it'll be coming from the person who, uh, measured it. Among other things, he's clarifying. Yeah.
Okay, we'll hear the next comment.
Ryan Maruni, 147 Hampton Road. Yeah, I think all you need is a calculator, it can take the square footage from the Western Report, and you do a little division, the total square footage, and it's a lot more than 15%, but I wasn't a math major. Item 13, it has a vote for October 21st, 2023. I'm just wondering where you expect people to park? I was there last weekend, and there are no parking spaces available due to the sports and activities at St. Paul's, so I'm wondering where the board expects those who want to vote, where do they park? Those who aren't involved in homecoming.
It's, as I mentioned before, it's comments, so we take your comment about the concern on parking.
Well, we're having a major vote, and there's gonna be nowhere to park, I'm just, we're wondering about the logistics, maybe the traffic committee want, I'm, I'm just wondering where you want people to go in, go out, what, what are we gonna do? You can barely get around there as it is, and you're having a major opinion poll, special election, and I'm just wondering where people are supposed to park?
Yeah, it's 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but this is.
While we all share your observations. Unfortunately, this format. Is it on? Or, thi- this, sorry about that, guys. You know, you keep on trying to tell me what to do. This format unfortunately is not one designed for that. I know that the commissioner will do his best. I share your concerns. Now that your concerns have been raised with the mayor, I am certain that it will be taken under consideration. Will we be able to answer them now? No. Will they be answered by October 21st? I hope so. But that's.
Fair enough, yeah, fair enough.
The voting is from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, okay? Homecoming activities, the soccer takes off, a decent portion of the day, but not the entire day. So at some point, there will be room for parking to vote. And of cour-
I mean.
Whoa, 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 wait, so wait a second. Excuse me, okay? What, why is it a joke, Betsy?
It's ridiculous, it's not, you're, you have to leave room for people to park. A lot of elderly residents.
Right.
You see elderly residents drive to the St. Paul during the day, it's, it's scary, it's scary.
I saw this on C-SPAN, reclaiming my time, I saw that on C-SPAN.
Okay.
I've only had about a minute.
It's a full day, okay, and.
Then we should, maybe, maybe I could suggest we have the voting from 6:00 to 8:00 then, or something. I just, I'm just gonna tell you that from refereeing there and watching my kids play there, the traffic situation is already a disaster, with kids running around through the parking lot. Now adding hundreds, thousands of, of people in cars on that day is foolish. No offense, it's very foolish, and it's dangerous. And I, I talked about this at the last meeting, why this day wasn't good. Homecoming and those, you cannot park as it is, the, people park all the way down to the railroad station on the other side of Stewart Avenue on those days. It's a very foolish idea, and I, we could leave it there. The other point I wanted to make is I'm curious of who chose the date, like who came up with the 21st? I probably won't get an answer, but I'm very curious to how that date was picked and why. It being homecoming, and there already be no parking at the facility where the vote is to be held. Again, just did not seem well thought out, and as we go down the road of not well thought out, the way it is worded, you could potentially vote for option one, or option two, and be voting for the same thing, the way it is written. Because everything ends in a community center and recreation, recreation center. So I don't even know what I'm voting for, if I'm voting for demo. Or I don't know what I'm gonna vote for, if I vote for facadeism and/or restoration. Because the last sentence of each option was the same. So we have a horrendous date that's chosen, we have a ballot that makes no sense, and probably has made people more confused. And if you can figure out what you want to vote for on that ballot, just don't come before 6:00 PM.
Yes. You can come up, Mr. Salem.
George Salem, St. Paul's Place. Uh, the ballot on 21st of October is lacking in a great deal of detail. I think we all agree on that. Specifically, when we vote, we do not know what we are voting for. For example, with respect to preservation, do you plan on any future ballots to narrow and focus usage for the adaptive use? We, we must provide specifics of uses for the space, otherwise residents would be voting in the dark, voting for an empty package. Also, like, likewise in any park after demolition, we should tell voters what activities will take place in that park. So I, I ask, do you plan on having, uh, other votes after October 21st, which would specify what would go in the preservation building, and what would be in the park itself? No answer. Okay, um, if we do not let voters speak on specifics, we will not have the closure that we need on the St. Paul's debate. It could go on for another 30 years if we don't know what we're gonna put in the building, but we'll have to have another debate on what to put in the building, and there's 200 choices of what we could put in the building. So I don't know how you narrow that down to a manageable list of what we're gonna put in the building. And you have to have people's comments on those items, you have to narrow it down, so maybe 12 items would fill up the building, I don't know how many items, but you, you have to give people knowledge of what the hell they're voting for. Thank you.
Garden City. Good evening, Board. Good evening, residents. I have a different problem. But I think that a preliminary poll cannot go through uses here, uses there, uses everywhere. This is a preliminary poll to get to another step, to refine and develop whatever the poll results, at least that's my understanding, I could be wrong. My issue is that at the meet and greet, which I'm upset about because it is non-agenda, this time it was YouTube, but usually it isn't. So my question is, is it gonna be YouTubeed in the future? If important information is gonna be conveyed at a meet and greet, then it should be an agenda. There wasn't for this. I listened to the YouTube, and I heard the mayor say that the poll is stacked against demolition, and she was comfortable with it. I understand what she was saying, and I appreciate her honesty in saying it. My understanding is, on one side, you have two possible choices within one box, and one on the other. Okay. That's fine, because if you would do it a different way and have three choices across, one, adaptive reuse, two, facade, three, demo, you would still have three choices. My concern is that people voting for, quote unquote, preservation, there is no mechanism in the box that I see that tells the board which one of those two residents would prefer within the preservation box. So if it's supposed to be an informative poll for the board to learn from the residents, I would think that there should be some mechanism where the residents say, one, two, three, even though two of them in one box, one is in the other. Thank you.
I gotta, I gotta, I'm on a different subject here. Uh, I have agenda item 23, the water main improvements. Oh, Steven Shoemaker, uh, 79 Poplar Street, Garden City, New York. Anyway, the water main improvements, um, I guess I read that there was a $3.32 million project authorized for Stewart Ave and Clinton Road. Is that work that's being done on Clinton Road not part of the scope of work that was being offered by the county? Which included the ripout and repave, water main replacement and gas utility replacements? Is that scope of work separate, or?
This is totally separate from the county project you're talking about.
But water, the water mains that would be replaced in a county project are not the same as?
The, the, the water mains that go into Clinton belong to the village. This is only going up to Commercial, so the it's not going further south toward Meadow. This is, there's a four-inch water main going in front of Bosse's that entire length, which is unacceptable in today's standards, it's, uh.
So it's a different water, water main that's being replaced on Clinton Road by the county?
The section, I'm not sure what they, they might be repositioning, I don't, I don't have the county plans, John might be able to answer that.
So the, uh, the replacement of the water main from Commercial Avenue south to Meadow Street will be explored once we get closer to the reconstruction project on Clinton Road. The existing project for the water main on Clinton Road goes from about Osborne to Commercial.
And the, and the county wouldn't, that was not part of that scope of work?
No, it is our water main, so it would be our responsibility to replace.
Okay, yeah, that was my main question there. Um, so that was, the follow-up would be, I guess, the county told me that the village was reviewing the plans for that, I guess, for people that don't know, it's a village will come up with a million bucks, and then the county will give us back 10 million bucks, so I think most people would take that deal. Anyway, is, is the, uh, is the, uh, village reviewing those plans, or is it, you know, where's it at?
We have not gotten a complete set of plans yet for that work. Uh, we did have a utility coordination meeting on July 11th, which was just to coordinate gas work with any sanitary work or water main work. Uh, we have yet to see the full plans, though.
All right, cool, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, anyone in the room on agenda items? Anyone on Zoom with a comment on agenda items?
Hello?
Go ahead, Judy.
Oh, hi, thanks. Judy Courtney, 33 Moon Street. I have a question for, um, not on St. Paul's, for trustee Kelly. I believe you had said in your comments that the board was going to consider or have an executive session about the casino, could you elaborate on that a little bit?
No, I said I was hoping the board would have an executive session on legal issues with regard to the casino.
Such as? Like what types, I guess I'm trying to understand, like, what would qualify?
No, I, I wouldn't discuss what legal issues we're discussing in an executive session.
Okay, I just thought I it would be helped to understand what kinds of things you're considering. So I guess we aren't privy to that. Nope, that's it. Not a great answer, but thank you.
Denette, go ahead.
Hi there. Um, I actually raised my hand. This is not um something that's on on the agenda. Um, I've raised it just after you. Requested that, but I can certainly go ahead if that's okay with everyone.
Sure.
Very good. So um on January tenth of this year, I had written a letter to the board in regards to um a company called C D L. Um, that was. Surprisingly digging up a portion of my grass and installing um some wiring and technology. Um, I only had caught this because I had a zoo, I had a um. I have a ring camera. And I was pregnant at the time and concerned with what was going into my ground. Um, no communications were sent to my home, so I raised this to the board. And um the board at the time and Ralph um had indicated that, you know, I could reach out to Altice. Um, but they Ralph had Ralph and his team had signed off on this work and a gentleman on January twentieth named Vincent Guerrero. Who is the director of executive customer relations at Altice. Wrote me a letter on the twentieth of January citing that what was installed in my lawn would not in fact conduct any incremental radiation. So as of this week, um, I was able to work with someone on getting reads on my property about radiation. And unfortunately, contrary to what everyone, what was told to me and promised to me in writing from Altice. There is radiation now in the ground and it's quite significant. Um, my concern is, one. Who is signing off on this and two, do we have? Um, ongoing requirements for those in the village that are signing off on contracts like this? That um require them to have continuing education because this is a changing and a quickly changing. Technology that does have radical health implications to residents. Um, and three, there are many of these trucks all over the town. Is I I don't even know if the board is aware of what is being put into our lawns and the impact that could. Um, the health impacts that it could be um giving our citizens over, you know, a short or a long period of time. So really raising this for awareness, I'm sure that many people like myself are not experts in the field. Um, and probably didn't realize this was happening, but I'm also sharing my concerns and hoping that. You know, there are some sort of measures in place to ensure that people that are signing on off on this. Can really speak to why why we would have more radiation impacted. On this, the village citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know if you want to comment or wait to report on this and.
So I I don't know anything more except what I learned this evening, my understanding. We've asked uh Altice to first of all. We've asked him to. Respect our residents and and provide customer service by. Letting people know in advance of any work being done in the vicinity of a of a home. Uh, we have been told and we believe it to be true that this is a fiber optic upgrade, which is light transmission. Which should not have any uh radiation effects. I I will not, I cannot and will not dispute anything that uh Mr. Riano said. But I don't know what the, you know. Whether radiation reads before. I don't know if there's natural radiation occurring. I don't know. I don't know what's in the air in the area. So. There could be telephone lines on the ground. I don't know. So I will talk to Altice. I'll talk to Altice and ask them. Uh, first of all, to. Recmit to identifying. The uh, you know, communicate to the residents. Uh, the only time we're notified of work on this level is when they require a road opening permit. Uh, otherwise they have. Access to the public rights of way. Uh, to my knowledge, I will talk to Mr. Fishberg and see if there's anything more we can. Uh, leverage with them and I will follow up on the radiation question, Mr. Riano. This is news to me. I don't know what, I don't know who you had. Do the readings. I'd like to speak to them. Like to know the means and methods of what they did because it might be important versus uh. Just the information you provided.
Ralph, I'm absolutely happy to send you more information offline and I did reach out to Craig Bandini, who I believe was involved at the the signatures of. These um exact, the exact execution of all this, but I will say that the reader that um. Brought this object to my home, I went over the areas that I saw the work being done on and it spiked through the roof. Um, in those specific areas. So again, happy to give you more details, but also want to raise awareness for the village residents. Um, because you know, if this is being done, perhaps we could stop it or there could be things that are replaced that um. If things have already been implemented and if that can't be done, then we'll need to really do research as citizens to better understand how we are protecting ourselves because I have. I mean, I have an eight month old infant at home. His brain is primarily water and his it's developing. And if there's massive radiation coming onto my house. If that were the case, that could be quite detrimental to his life. So um again, don't want to be. I don't want to cause um. A ton of concern where where there it's not meant to be, but this is certainly alarming um in my opinion. So thank you for your time. I'm happy to work with you offline. But yes, um. Just following up on this January issue. Thank you.
Can I ask you if you could please send me the email? I'm out of the office tomorrow and Friday. But I I could still follow up the email of a part of the day. I'll be on the road. And I would like to uh. Get some really specific information.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I also forward you all the emails that Altice said um sent to me that cited that there there would not be radiation that would uh radiation impact. So. But you will have that um when you discuss.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, thank you for calling in with this.
Thank you.
There any other ish uh comments? One more in the room.
Thanks, thanks, and thank you Karen and welcome new girl. Um, Betsy Andromedes, one sixteen New Market Road. I too wrote to you, I haven't heard back a couple of weeks ago. About the vote and why rush it and and I think everybody kind of agrees. The ballot stinks. So you know, if we could rework it, but I would like to invite you to talk to the St. Paul's Alliance. Because they do have a good plan and one thing that we desperately need and we deserve is a community center. And anybody like Michelle or anybody that has driven their kids to the Sid Jacobson place at five o'clock for S A T prep. Or gone to Rockville Center for basketball. So many things could be done in our village. We have such a nice village. It would be fantastic if we had a real community center and it from zero to a hundred or people live longer than a hundred now. But. We deserve this and that's all I want to say. Thanks.
All right. I doesn't look like another comment.
All right, well, Elise, um twenty Pelteras. I've been hesitating whether to come up or not. Um, and I'll tell you why. Uh, I think it was the twenty fourth of August, I sent you mayor a letter. By email and it's gone unanswered. I next decided to send. Something similar to it to Meg Norris. To see if it could get published and maybe you could see it that way and that went unpublished. Um, but then there was a meet and greet and I had the opportunity to speak. And with all due respect, your response was, thank you very much. And that's all I got. And it was similar to what um. Ryan Maloney received when he commented at the last B O T meeting. There's real serious problems with the ballot, the way it's written. My friends at F M and I were in agreement that it should be written correctly. It's misleading, it's confusing. Well intentioned, maybe, but it just doesn't. Clarify what you're voting for. That's the first thing. The second thing is the date stinks. And there was a B O T member who recommended one month more. And a lot of people who were saying shifted to March when then reelection comes. By then, all the answers can be clarified correctly. There could be no more mistakes. There could be no more confusion. I don't think that's too much to ask. And I think these continuous. rebuttals of thank you very much, goodbye. It just doesn't do anything for your cause, let alone the the peoples. And it's turned me away from, you know, I came into this process with a very open mind. Architecturally, I knew where I stood. But in terms of cost. And what made sense for the village, I I needed to be convinced. I'm getting terrible vibrations from the board of trustees. I'm sorry, but I am. And I don't think I'm alone. And. You know, you guys just have to respond. There would be no shame in saying. We want to change the date. We want to make it better. I commend you for trying to have a an opinion poll. But you have to do it right. This is just terrible for the village. Thank you.
Any other comments in the room or online? Right, so um. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar with the one? I'm sorry, do we have motion to approve the minutes of August seventeenth?
I'll make second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In Anderson. Thank you. Um, all right, the uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from August twenty eighth for August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three special meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Upstate.
Another item that just came up last week that I think we're all uh happy to be a part of is. There is an organization, you may have noticed other communities doing uh tree lightings with gold lights for pediatric cancer awareness month. And that's something Garden City would like to be a part of as well. And we are looking to schedule that. Uh, we have a. You know, in contact with the group that donates the lights. We have um. People who are looking to help organize this and we're looking at next Wednesday. It's the month of September, so we want to get it done quickly. We're looking at next Wednesday at seven P M.
Accordingly, I'll make a motion to suspend the board rules in order that we can now add this to the calendar.
It's.
Second that motion.
All right, so all in favor of moving on to the calendar, a motion to approve the village participating in the lighting for pediatric cancer cancer awareness month.
Now we have to make the motion. For the date.
All right, so is there a motion um to uh? Set the date for Wednesday for this event and then the lights will be lit on a timer through the remainder of the month.
That's September twenty, September twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes, so that um. Will be scheduled for next Wednesday if anyone would like to attend. Going to be right over here at the Village Green. Picking the spot for the lights. All right, so um we'll move then to the consent calendar and I believe the one correction. Oh, the formal agenda.
Formal agenda.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the appointment of Kelly Galanek?
Aye, so move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And do we have a motion to approve the final site plan for Tap Room Inc?
I I so move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's approved. All right, and we'll move then to the consent calendar. And I believe the one correction that trustee Kelly noted is not a renewal, it's a new agreement with the Delphi. So with that correction, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any citizen comments on non-agenda items?
Evening, Cristela Carpe, thirty eight Edgemy Road. Uh, I'm here as a volunteer for the Western Prop Your Association on a concern neighbors brought up. Um, I've raised with a few people here. I'm not sure where to go with this. So any guidance you can give, I appreciate. Ms. Cook has a kid who's a kindergartner at Homestead School. Ms. Cook lives on Wilson, south of Stewart. This the the school district has told her she's close enough. This kid has to walk to school. So we have to get a five year old across Stewart Avenue twice a day during rush hour. Um, she has to get a bus. Apparently that's a matter of state law and she cannot get a bus for this kid. He's she in the radius. But where do you cross Stewart Avenue? Now there's a crosswalk at Tanner's Pond. If the kid walks down past the fire station to get there, I've heard that's not a safe thing for the kid to do. Can we get a right now, the cross place for that kid to cross is at Stewart and Clinch. Where there is no crosswalk. I think there's a button for the light, but there's no crosswalk. Now. I thought maybe a crossing guard would be the solution for this. I'm not sure who actually provides a crossing guard. I've seen, you know. Professional crossing guards. They look like I've seen volunteer police do it. I'm not sure who does it. I know there's a crosswalk and a crossing guard on Stewart at Maryland Avenue for the middle school kids. I don't see any other crosswalk for the kids who have to cross to get to Homestead. Now, I'm going to go to the Board of Education next week and see what they say about this, but I'm not sure where to go because I'm not sure who who being charged, whether it's the police or the traffic commission or you or the Board of Ed. Where can I go with this?
All right, so actually that's something two residents reached out to me and I've spoken with Commissioner and with Mr. Baroni about this. I don't know if you want to update. I know the commissioner discussed with. Superintendent Sinha.
Right, aren't you getting copies of the emails that talk about the safety zone for children? Haven't you gotten that?
I've gotten communication from Mr. From the Police Commissioner, I think, and we talked about it, but. I'm not sure what you're referring to on that. I don't think I got anything about it. I got. Ms. Cook told me that the district has told her she's not getting a bus and apparently that's almost out of their hands. So this kid's going to have to be a walker. That's that's what I've gotten, but I've got anything.
All right, maybe the commissioner clarify for you and I don't have to keep going. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, so a person from that street and another person in that street reached out to the mayor. The mayor reached out to me to see if anything we could do. This is a very complicated issue. Uh, when the uh. There's parameters set by the state of New York and D O T and education uh law regarding uh what a school district can do and cannot do in the in. In determining a child safety zone, child safety zones will help you get busing. There's a mileage, there's mileage, if it's like a two mile radius. Kindergarten age had one set of rules and uh then high school people have another set of rules. I am a little bit familiar with that. I'm also a bit of a traffic, you know, guru. Um. I asked the school uh school district to revisit the issue and I went down it with them on several occasions. Um, and and I. As I reviewed it, I thought it reached a that criteria for child safety zones for a lot of different reasons. It gets complicated. I brought them down. I I explained that to them. They listened to me. And um I believe they may be voting on it next Tuesday. So that's where we are at this point. Uh, to cross, to me, to cross that uh area. It's it's not, it's not to me a safe issue for a five year old. Um, it's it's a diagonal street uh clinch. The the cutouts don't match. John was with me. There's a push button, but the the traffic light is set back. I explained that all to them. I know they also talked about walking to Tanner's Pond, but. Actually, a firehouse is considered hazard twelve points, which is uh. A go for kindergarten age, so. And then we don't want them to walk it even farther distance on two main roads going down to North Park Road. So I actually understand what you're saying and I. Kind of agree, but I can't make that decision. So I have, they've been very good to me. I I've been down there with Linda Green several cases. She's the head of the bus and I talked to Dr. Sinha and the rest of her staff. And um I'm. And I'm hoping that she gets it, they did this in two thousand and seven or eight is when they first went over this. And a lot of times when you're going, all of a sudden, you're just starting from scratch, you're looking at a map. And you're looking at a map, and when you look at a map, generally it looks okay, you know, there were some areas just come right at you, reaches their criteria. This one. You know, just look at a map, you don't see that, but when you go down there and you look at it, and with my experience, you know, forty-two years in the business. I explained to them what I thought, they listened to me. And then, you know, even even though if they agree with me, they have to run it by the state board, and then they have to vote on it. So again, I don't know what the answer is going to be, but I'm kind of, if it's going to the the school board, to me, that's a plus, I mean, they might have ran it by somebody in the state. So I'm hoping. And again, I like the fact that they listened to me, they went down there, and I got some burn, my Irish skin, and but I pounded the payment, and John was with me. He's got darker skin, so he's better off than I am, so but we did, we did right, John, we worked hard on this, but it's out of our hands. But for me, to put a crossing guard there, first of all, you need a crosswalk, county's got to put the cross again, it's a long distance, that's almost like, to me, it's almost six lanes, not four lanes, so. And and the cutouts don't match, so I'll have people tripping and everything else, and a lot of times, when you have a five-year-old, it's, it could be a parent walking with another child to get that child there, so I don't, that's a lot of stuff involved. And I know I'm getting a little low-winded, but it's, the mayor saw it, was concerned, sent me down there, and we're doing what we can do. And and I'm hoping that they listen to us. Is there anything I miss?
Thank you for putting all the attention into that and the work, and let's hope for a good outcome.
Thank you.
We hear you, we're trying.
Appreciate it.
So Commissioner, is it then in the Board of Ed's hands, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the board, the board will, when there's a child's safety zone, and I believe they don't even have to, even if it reaches that, they don't have to say yes or no to that. They just can go by the mileage, so.
Understand.
Like I said, I stress it, and they listen to me, I just hope they agree in the long run.
Thank you.
Steve Alodi, one thirty-nine Meadow Street. I'm not sure if anyone has seen the condition of the Country Life Press Train Station Building. A big chunk of the gutter on the east side of the building has come down, it's hanging. From the railroad side, most of the roof has collapsed. So I I know we went through that process with the railroad, but it seems to be becoming a bigger hazardous condition. And regarding the. Four-minute limit and the no comments. You kind of stuck to the four minutes, but some people you comment on, some people you don't. And a couple administrations ago. They were criticized for having a four-minute limit, and they were called rude when people would come up here and and have comments. And the the mayor or the trustees would say, you know, thank you, and that was it. And now here we are, several years later, and you're imposing what many of people said was rude from the past administrations, and you're going back to that. So maybe it's a matter of, it's easy to throw stones from the outside, and now that you're up there, maybe you don't want to deal with the back and forth. And I don't think having meet and greets and other meetings are a substitute for an official village meeting. I don't expect to comment, but thank you for your time.
Hi, Mary McGuire, sixty-seven Kingsbury, it's a quick one, and I think it needs to be one, I just want a clarification on the homecoming parade, I know there's no vendor fairs from what I, and if it's on your website, I apologize for not looking. But are there going to be tables for community organizations, is that still in the plan or what?
Mr. Wilton's not here, he wanted to speak to me about that, he's thinking of some different options, and I know he's spoken with the Commissioner, so we did have that on.
That was.
Yeah, the parade, but it is not yet, I don't think they've decided yet what exactly they're doing, he had an idea that he was talking to, but I don't think.
Alright, well, thank you for an answer at least, okay.
Alright, any other questions or comments on, no questions, any comments on non-agenda items?
Once again. Bill Lucano, Houston Road, I received an email from trustee Chester about my opinions on traffic and signage and all that, so I apologize for not coming to the traffic meeting, but I wanted everybody here to see. Something that I put together, that I sent to trustee Chester, I think he forwarded the email to everybody. It's Courtney Perez, resident one seventy-eight Wellington Road, had an issue with parking on her street, and I know it's, you know, kind of far away from the Maryland Avenue Station, but. There does seem to be an ongoing problem with parking. So what I did was I put some signs up. On on my email, and I said, there's certain. Certain pictures, hopefully this will come in a little better, certain signs in certain areas, and they. Some of them work and some of them don't, so I just wanted to respond, and I'm just going to read the email, it's easier. The first photo, if you can get to it. Is a two-hour parking, that's it right there, two-hour parking, eight A M. to six P M., and that's the entire area south of Main and Somerset Avenues, that's what I think it needs. I'd go as far as to suggest expanding the area to include the Brompton Road and all the way to Sackville Road. I've seen people parking on the extreme edges and walking to Maryland. And most of these cars are not owned by Garden City residents. The only reason that this issue doesn't affect residents on the north side of Maryland Avenue, the homes on Kensington, Brixton, and Kilburn, is because that sign right there was installed several years ago in those neighborhoods. By Strawberry Fields and all that. These same signs appear in the neighborhoods in and around Nassau Boulevard Train Station, there's a problem with students going to Adelphi and parking there by the train station. It's a great, we have a great parking lot there for residents to use, but then the outlying areas, that sign seems to work. They're, they've been proven to be effective in in both of those instances. Sign number two is what is currently on my block and the surrounding blocks by the station. It's no parking eight A M. to twelve noon. It's south of Main Avenue, it's evident that it's been quite ineffective, there are too many ways to circumvent being ticketed. Commuters often have family members drop off their vehicles in the immediate area, so when they return to Garden City, they simply depart the train and head right to their cars that are parked only a few houses in from Main Avenue. This mainly occurs from Houston Road up to Roxbury Road, but would expand if signage was changed for those four streets. Hence my suggestion to expand the area east and west of Nassau Boulevard, just like it is on Kensington by Strawberry Fields. Sign number three, I have no stopping or standing, I think those signs there need to be installed on Main and Maryland Avenue from Nassau Boulevard to Roxbury Road, because it's a, it's a thoroughfare now. It's a little different having a station that doesn't have a true station plaza with all the work that's been done at Maryland now, it's a neighborhood, and you have cars flying down. Tanner's Pond Road, which turns into Main Avenue, so I I think that would be great to no stopping or standing, just to Roxbury to Nassau. The next sign, I would like to see installed on the north side of Main Avenue from Kildare to Wickham, and that's by the Tullamore, Tullamore Playground side. It's okay to park on the south side of Main Avenue there, but the north side by the railroad tracks, I don't think it's a great idea. So I'd like to see that no stopping any time sign on that side, and this is because children are playing sports and their parents are dropping them off, and there's a lot of action back and forth. And to have cars parked on either side of Main Avenue, I don't think it's a safe idea. And you have a two-lane road, and you have just a little narrow roadway to kind of negotiate that area, so I think the parking should be for that playground and baseball games and all that, just on the south side. So that's, that's my idea for the parking and the signage on these thoroughfares. Then, last but not least, I have the mailbox, the infamous mailbox that is on Maryland Avenue. It is, first of all, it's backwards, so you have to stop in a active roadway to mail a letter. I don't think that's a great idea, there's three lanes there, and what happens is, people just stop dead, and they're going to mail a letter, and you have somebody behind them, oh, and they got to get to the middle lane or the right lane, so I don't think it's, I don't think it's safe. So as I said, the mail slot is is on the wrong side, I don't know why it's like that, but I just, I'm an advocate for removing it entirely and putting it across the street. There, right now, there is a porta potty right in that spot, I think that's a fantastic spot for a mailbox, it's safe, there's a parking area there, pick-up, drop-off, I think it would be really nice to have it there. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Bill.
Robert, sorry, getting late, long day. Robert Vassalotti, thirty-two Brixton Road, I completely agree with Bill Lucano, we've had this discussion several times over many months, we're both involved with the area, we know the area there, my daughter lives a couple of houses from that area. On Houston, I grew up in that area, so kudos to Bill with his photos, photos and representations here, I agree thoroughly. Couple of things, I'm glad the window. Host and and removal was taken off the agenda tonight, and I'm glad that there was some discussion on it, however. I will just say right now, I don't agree with it at all to remove these windows. Saint Patrick's Cathedral went through a renovation, one of the greatest churches in the world, they never moved the windows off that building, they boarded them up and protected them in place. I think we're asking for trouble to remove windows to pay for it, store it, and then, as Bruce said. How much to cost, how much does it cost to put them back in, unless the intention is not to put them back in, which troubles me. My my concern is that this is an historic building on the National Register of Historic Places, the seventh to save New York State Preservation League, and we shouldn't be messing around with something that is. Been sitting here for all these years at this point in time, until we know what we're going to do, and when we do know what we're going to do, which is hopefully make it a community center. As it stands, totally functional for all residents, very adaptable to many future uses, including a perhaps. A pool in the back or a performing arts center in the back. Every room in that building could be used someday, it'll be whiteboxed, so we can be ready to move. But to think about demolition is absurd. Facadism is even worse. And to move the windows is criminal, so I really think that they should be boarded up, not removed. And one final thing, oh, I have two minutes, one final thing is questions, right? Questions require answers, so we're getting cut off all the time from answers, even the answers ask questions on the website. First of all, it's hard to find the email on the website, it's it's in the mayor's message, but when you click on the thing that says questions and answers, you just see the answers, you don't see the mail address. So the mail address is only hidden in the mayor's message, so that needs to be cleaned up on the website. I mean, yes, we got it on the handout tonight, but it's not clear on the website itself, when you post the question, we don't see the answer come up. So I asked a question about the ballot, and why it's at fifteen percent, and not twenty-five percent, we heard that discussion tonight, but I would have expected that when my question was asked. You know, through the website, that I would have seen an answer, you know, on the website, but I did not. So I'd like to make the. Mail address more obvious on the website and see more answers sooner onto the website rather than later, and I appreciate the effort to reorganize those responses, so that will be good going forward. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Steve Gray again, still at forty-four Cambridge since an hour ago. Question, I think I know the answer, but I want to reinforce if possible. The stained glass windows in the building, are they insured right now? So in other words, if something happens to them in the next few years before a final decision is made as to what to do, and they deteriorate, they fall apart, we will have lost the asset in its entirety, am I right?
Possibly, unless we get them appraised and then get them insured.
But. If we lose them because we left them in and and they start to fall apart, that they, we can't do anything with them, they're gone, we have no insurance on them, correct?
Right now, no.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Hardy, live on Meadbrook Road, grew up in town, went to Saint Paul's, graduated in eighty-eight. My graduation ceremony was over at the cathedral, beautiful cathedral. You know, I prayed underneath those stained glass windows for sixth grade, twelve, six, six years, you know. So you happen to have a resident here that grew up in town that cares about those windows, why do you guys all of a sudden care about those windows? I moved back to town in twenty sixteen, this is the first I'd heard about it, and I got it off of Facebook, I didn't get it anywhere else. My question is, why all of a sudden this sudden concern about the windows, and whose idea is it? We're now going to start dismantling Saint Paul's, like one piece at a time, one little treasure at a time? Just, it doesn't seem right, it just doesn't smell right. I'm always, you know, wondering about agendas and what's behind it, and who's behind it, and why is behind it, and does anyone have an answer where the idea came from?
I think it's been discussed before with the windows, it's not the.
Discussed in the wind or discussed?
Discuss.
Like as an idea?
The windows, yeah.
Check page twelve of the Western Report, the June Western, Westerman Report, page twelve.
On the website, I'll find the Western Report, page twelve.
Page twelve.
Now.
You will have an answer.
Yeah, just on the windows too, we've had, this has been an ongoing, we had a resident who came to like almost every meeting, she would stand up and ask, what's the status of the windows? And honestly, that resonated with me because we never had a good answer for her.
So the windows have been there for a hundred and fifty years?
I'm not, you know.
No, but that's right.
This isn't a Q and A, but we have, they haven't all been there for a hundred and fifty years, but we, that's for another.
Okay.
You you probably know the the history of the windows, so.
Right, they've been there a long time, and they've been doing just fine without our involvement. Just wondering, you know. What what's, what's the motive, other than saving the windows and putting them in our house, you're going to get the skylight one for your house?
It's only if the village doesn't want it.
Right, exactly, so like that's, you know, just, you know, it's tongue-in-cheek, I guess, right, but like, you know, I just, it's a funny kind of. Agenda just seems, it doesn't smell right, and I hope you guys, I'll look at the report tonight, and thanks for hearing me.
Thanks, no motive, no agenda. Alright, any other comments? Non-agenda items in the room? Anyone online? Okay.
Good evening, Mary Timmons, Sixth Linden Street, and right now, I'm not talking about Saint Paul's, I I just wanted to make sure that. Kudos was given to the sanitation department, I think they're doing a great job on keeping the area looking great. They're, they're working expeditiously, they are, everything is picked up, it's amazing, the streets are clean. The, I wanted to say thank you for the traffic commission, who's ever been on it for a while. I think that's really been helping the area of the Hemlock School, there is no longer a concern of those children as they're arriving at school with the traffic coming through there, it has. Lessened, it's it's maybe fifteen percent of what it used to be, so that's great. The senior center, I I I think it looks fabulous, it's warm and it's inviting, it's fresh and clean, and it feels more like a Apollo room than a cafeteria. So I think that was a great job, and it was. Under the circumstances, it was done in a, in a very nice, fast fashion, and which is, everybody needed, and so thank you to. Paul Blake and Mr. Barone and Mr. Swazi, and to Mr. Giovanni, Giovannielli. And the next thing, if I have a minute left, I am concerned about the. The turf fields, we're putting more and more turf fields in, I know people don't want to hear this because they do look great. I'm seeing now, if anybody looked at CNN today and looked at the news, they're, the NFL Players Association is now calling for the. the NFL Players Association is now calling for the discontinuance of the turf fields and going back to a durable grass. The players have for 10 years have been complaining about it for injuries and how hard it is on their bodies, especially their lower bodies. I also want to say that the mayor, Mayor Wu of Boston has said, no more, no more artificial turf. This is relation to cancer rates they're seeing in children, but they're in the parks and the city parks, they will do it no more. Martha's Vineyard, they're also at schools. Schools are looking to change that. So I think we're coming to a point where it was a great idea and then we learned the word PFAS. And we have a problem with water. Why would we want to put down more artificial turf fields when they contain PFAS? So that was my comment on that. And then the very last thing, just because it came up tonight on the CDL and it's I happened on Friday to be at the corner of Maxwell and, what, Kenwood, someplace around there. And there were a lot of trucks and I spoke to PSC people there and asked them what they were doing. And they said, oh, we've already had the police here today. People are calling the police. They are concerned. So CDL, CDL was here 12 or 13 years ago. It's possible council remembers that and CDL did work for a lying conduit in a quiet way. And through that conduit in the village, they put wiring that eventually was hooked up to cell antennas and 11 or so cell antennas were planted in people's backyards without them knowing, without their authorization. So now we have CDL here again. In fact, one of those CDL antennas was placed in my yard, attached to another property, and there was no permit for the location and CDL was non-responsive to our calls that they did work without a permit for the address. They went to six houses down from the address they had a permit for and just decided to plop it there. I think we have to pay attention to that. I don't think we have enough information as to what they're doing here. I worry that there will be fiber. Oh, I'm done. Okay. Okay, yeah, okay. So I think that the environmental committees have to be familiar with what's going on. And I think we should call the government relations executive and invite him to Garden City and have an open and honest meeting with Q and A on what's, what they're doing here, what their end game is. I know what it is. Thank you.
There you go. Andrew Tarman, 114 Wilson Street. Like to thank you all for being here. I know you're in your service. Just want to acknowledge it. It's a tough crowd, tough what you do. I've been involved in this for 30 years. I am a graduate of St. Paul's. I spent time, John and I are in the same class. Just want to make a couple of comments. Behind you, we talked about this village being founded by Alexander Seward. Man, the reason why we're here today, right? Garden City was founded, that building, St. Paul's building that we're all talking about, is a memorial to him by his wife. You could see his name on the front of the building. Thing here is you have an opportunity to save this building, which makes Garden City what it is. You have an opportunity for your grandchildren, your great grandchildren to use this beautiful building that John and I were able to use. And it creates, makes this town unique. But the one thing, and I'll say this. The costs are already readily available. The uses, there's such a need in this town. There's so many things you could do with it because there's a huge need. There's no indoor space in this town, I've noticed in the last 25 years. Where do we meet? You know, you have the senior center over here. I mean, that's kind of falling apart. I mean, look, look at the cottages behind there. They're falling apart, but you have a building that could be reused. And it's, it's the center of Nassau County. When you look at it, it's an unbelievably impressive building. You light it every winter. It's like a Christmas tree. It's unbelievable. It makes this town amazing. You have an opportunity to do something great in your time here, everyone of you. And I'm just asking you to really think about this and the true costs that has to be put out to the residents. Because I've seen the plans and are unbelievable and they are inclusive for everyone from cradle to grave. Daycare, senior center, student center, everything. It's unbelievable. You have to look at it. When you have demo, you get a hole in the ground and you got to pay for it. And I can't believe you put one red cent into destroying that beautiful building that makes this town unique. Or you could take the same amount of money and have an unbelievable center that's going to increase your house values and my house value. And it's going to be something that I, when I want to sell, I could say you got this community center in the middle of town and it's unique and it's unbelievable. And I put it on you. Do something great. Make us all happy. And get this off the agenda. It's been 30 years of back and forth and all these different people coming in, put a, put a old age home there. We don't need that. You need a community center. And the plan is ready to go, but I want that plan to be foot forth and I'm going to show up at those meetings that you're having a Q and A. But what set of facts are we going to be talking about? Because we talked about a lot of agendas tonight, but I feel if you look at the facts that we have, I do believe you'll choose this way. So I put it on you. Thank you for your time. See what this goes.
Any other comments in the room or on Zoom on?
On Zoom, I have, yes.
Okay.
Judy?
Hi, Judy Courtney, 3 Chairman Street. As Steve would say, still. I have a question about mayor, what you talked about at the beginning of the meeting about the four minute rule and trustee reaction. How is that decided?
That was my decision.
Because I. There was no, there was no trustee input. There was no public discussion and there was no vote.
Well, actually, this is not back and forth. It's in the board rules and I'll have to say I've gotten pressure significantly before tonight when I did decide it was time. It is in the board rules. It has always, has been for, I don't know how long.
So.
Trustees opined, Judy, trustees opined.
So interestingly, as Steve said, you know, some comments were answered tonight, some weren't. I would, is, is Mr. Fishberg allowed to answer?
Actually. This is common. So if you have a comment, make your comment.
So when do, well, how?
15.
All right. So my question is, how do I get an answer to my question?
Send an email.
To whom?
I don't know what your answer, what your question about my decision to enforce the rule.
No, my, my question is, how is this? How is the decision made because the rule was not enforced? And secondly, the degree to which trustees can or cannot answer, I don't believe is part of the village guidelines. And yet it was stated at the meeting. So I'm trying to understand that. The four minute rule, yes, is articulated and I understand that. But the lack of interaction with residents, I don't believe, I could be wrong. I don't believe is actually part of the guidelines. So I'm trying to understand that.
All right.
So who do I ask that question of? Gary, I think that might be you. But I'm not allowed to ask you because you only answer the trustees.
Judy, let me just, let me just clarify part of your question. The mayor is the chief executive officer and has the authority.
Could be.
To direct, Judy.
Sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. I apologize.
It's all right.
I apologize.
I get interrupted at home all the time. I'm used to it. So the real question is, the mayor is the chief executive officer and has the authority to make certain directions. Yes, it is in the board rules that she has the authority to enforce it. If you ask the commissioner about people speeding through the streets, he's going to tell you, yes, there is a rule on the speed limits, but somehow along the line, cars go faster. If a board member individually wants to respond to you, they can. Can they be compelled to answer you? No. So in my particular case, if there's a question that I believe a response from me is warranted, I will. But as far as enforcing the four minute rule, that's up to the mayor. If you think that the board should have a different rule on time. Make a suggestion and maybe we'll change the board rules.
Right. And I don't expect an answer. So I think there were, there were two pieces of what was stated. One is the four minute rule, which I understand and is a very, you know, concrete and easy to understand dimension to this. And the second was that the way in which trustees will respond. And that this was not going to be a Q and A and not a dialogue, that trustees would just listen to resident comments and it would just be comments. And if you had to, and I'll just leave it at that. So that's it. Thank you. Now I, now I know what happened. Thank you.
Any other questions on Zoom or comments on Zoom? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No, no, I have two things. One bill. Number three in tonight's agenda, and the traffic commission addressed that area. We're going to supplement that with your materials. And we're going to ask Commissioner Jackson and Superintendent Barone to consider the suggestions you've made. And thank you for all your work. And second, I move to adjourn and go into executive session regarding a legal matter connected to the proposal for a Sands Casino. All right. Well, adjourn the meeting and have an opinion of counsel. Not tonight, no.
Okay, a second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. So the meeting's adjourned and we'll go to a.